That's as much as I can handle, but that doesn't mean that we can't recruit for something and have the city support the idea that it's important for us to wake up and participate in this.
I don't think that we didn't say that we wouldn't. We said that we were keeping a committee, we were reinstating it, we were going to recruit for it. If we got, based on the number of applications, we would consider reducing the requirements so it would be in place, and we reduced what their requirements are to the following: act in an advisory capacity and make recommendations, both programmatic as well as legislative, to the city council upon request regarding matters pertaining to the town's environmental issues, including the town's local and regional roles. Develop and propose, city council, propose these to the city council in a timely and appropriate manner. Address environmental issues and/or threats that maybe become, may become concerns to the community.
Actually, go ahead.
Oh, B is out, oh, sorry. So it's just the advisory. So we're saying we want to keep the committee, we're not killing the committee, but we're saying if we can't get enough people there, then we're not going to have two council members and a staff guy meet regularly.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not going to be 50 percent of the number, where if people apply and they're interested, we'll consider making it a smaller committee.
But I don't think, I don't think the role of the council and the staff are as important as making sure we have or trying to get, you can only go so far. A lot of people complain to you on your walk, but they don't want to put any time into one of these committees. I mean, that's, that's a perpetual issue.
I have to say that, that I'm not making the comment as necessarily representing my views. I'm saying we have to respond to what the residents think is important, and based on the things that happened a few years ago when I was quite active with some of the environmental, we got really very, very little interest from the residents in reducing electricity consumption or gas consumption or anything else, and therefore, while it may be good or bad, and I'm not saying it's good or bad, I'm just saying, we have an awful lot of things to do at the moment, so, and you know, many of those residents feel very strongly about, we really have to respond to what the residents want.
Can I make a suggestion?
I guess the issue of whether it's a balance of whether your body is only to reflect what the people want, or your body is also to say, we as current leaders of the residential component of Atherton recommend that we be, try to be a little more supportive.
Well, we could do that, we could do that.
Can I, can I make a recommendation? I'm on the committee with Elizabeth. I think, let me check with Hillsborough, let me check with Portola Valley, let me check with Woodside, find out what their environmental committees or liaisons or what, how they, how they operate, what your role is, and then try and figure out, present, give you all the information, I'm not going to read out certain things, give it all to you with a recommendation as to how we might proceed. In the meantime, let's solicit people, but I mean, we can, we can oversee an energy audit, we can try and let people know about some of these new programs, we can try and explain to them what our solar program is, if it's a flat fee for whatever the solar system is, and did you know that panels have gone down considerably? And we can do a lot of it through email and through the app, informing people.
In the newsletter too, in the back.
That's the Atherton.
Yeah.
Okay, is that okay?
Yeah.
Sounds good, you might also think about waiting the term in this for this committee as well.
That's a good idea, if we can't get people.
Why don't we take that as a con, and let's see what happens? But yes, we may have to.
So we're going to reinstate them.
Reinstate them, and we're actively recruiting, but they won't be meeting until after we vote.
I would like to speak to Mr. Dobie really quick, and you say earlier, you were saying that you were interested in recruiting new blood, in getting people who are younger, who are Atherton residents, interested in being involved in committees, and you live in an area now where the two biggest industries are technology and clean energy, and if you were interested in recruiting new blood, I think this would be a fine opportunity for you to pursue that.
Thank you. Well, we all get clean tech emails regularly for all the different activities going on and for the environment, and we should find out if there are people that are actually living here in Atherton that are part of those organizations and get them, encourage them to come.
Like the energy meetings at the library, I don't know how many people know about those, and you figure out what your high-energy appliances are, get rid of them or replace them. Okay.
Okay, so we're keeping the committee, we're keeping the committee, we're going to actively recruit for it. If we don't get a substantial number of inputs, then we will consider reducing the committee to a committee of five as opposed to, or something, whatever the council chooses, all right? All right, thank you. Next.
Do you want to take a vote on that one? You made a motion, but you have seconds.
Yes, all in favor of the vice?
Seconds.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Finance committee, I think we've already done this one.
Yeah, thanks.
So that one's done. General planning committee, is anybody here from the general planning committee? Oh, Herm.
I'm currently acting as chairman of the general planning committee and chairman of the planning commission, and the planning commission had its last meeting, recommended that you abolish the general planning committee and transferred its duties to the planning commission, and the reason for that is several, that the general planning committee hasn't met since, since last May, there's been at least two seats from the general public vacant. The, in other towns, there is no general planning committee, the work is done by the planning commission, that the, obviously, to maintain a committee has a small effect on your budget, I think if you're really going to try to make your revenue meet your expense, or vice versa, I should say, a good look at your committees, which you're doing today, is important, and one of them, certainly, that merits abolishment is the general planning committee. It certainly would not be overburdening the planning commission to take on what committees there are with the general planning committee.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I would agree with you, Herm, I mean, at one point I was chairman of the general planning committee as well, and at that time we were talking about the housing element, and that happened to be a, an item, a 10-year item that we finally got finished, and I think that we've always been told that the general plan committee could only work on issues for which the council assigned it, and generally speaking, I mean, it was one of these committees after we got the housing element approved, that it was very little for it to do, we had nine members on it, most, most of the time they didn't all show up, and I, I just think it took planning staff time, it took legal staff time, I really think, I agree with you totally, I think that we can combine it with the planning, if it's legal to do so.
I think, let me just point out that four members of the committee get a second cha, get a chance again at a particular proposal, the two are from the council, you know, and two are from the planning commission, so it really is a very inefficient process.
Yeah. The greatest efficiency that was, that was accomplished was by Paul Crinlin and you, Phil, when you worked on the housing element information for them as a subcommittee, having nothing to do per se with the general plan, so, yeah, I agree.
All right, so we have a motion to the...
I move, we disband the general plan committee.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on, Parks and Rec. Shirley, would you like to?
Sure, um, I think the description of Park and Rec is pretty consistent, as you know, we are a recommendation committee to the town council, our main charter is to oversee the park and stewards of the park, we do do two annual walk-throughs of the park, I think one of the questions that the committee had, and I think you addressed that, the unexcused absence, and we'll follow through, we do have a consistent problem with some of our commissioners on that, and we'll follow through with that now, and understanding the rules. The one question I would have, and I don't know if all our commissioners have read this, but may need to be clarified for me at this time, assist town staff in planning recreation programs at the community, which I don't have a problem with, promoting and stimulating public interest, and I would like the clarification at this time, is how you would want the commission to do that.
We need to write that, staff.
This is, so, this was established by resolution 10-13, and these have been your rules since, I mean, it could have been 2002, I don't know who necessarily made these, but we can refine them.
Yeah, I, you know, I don't know how, as a commission, as an advisory commission, how that applies, and I, if it stays there, I think it would need clarification.
Why don't we, why don't we strike in, promote and stimulate, so you are, as I understand it, planning recreation activities for the community, period, the end. Promoting is the town's responsibility with your input, stimulating interest again is the town's responsibility, you know, so I agree with you. Else you're going to have to have a budget to go out and start running ads and radio.
Well, I was just going to say, if you want us to do that, we're going to, we would have a budget, we don't, it's not really commissions-type things to have a budget.
Good point. So, so it's recommended that we strike after, we put a change of comment to a period and strike the rest of the sentence.
It's a state.
All right. Are there any staff comments on Parks and Rec or questions? My question would be, what's this, however, the use of police personnel is not suitable, what, what does the police do for the Parks and Rec?
We currently have the police department's executive assistant, who actually attends the Park and Recreation, Park and Recreation Commission meetings.
Well...
But she's responsible for the park, and Jennifer's responsible for the park.
She doesn't work on Wednesdays and the meetings are on Wednesdays, so she travels, you know, the hour and a half to come to that meeting.
Oh, okay, well, that's, that's a problem, but I mean, she sort of replaces Jean Cadois as far as scheduling activities in the park.
Well, it's not just Jennifer, it's not just Jennifer, actually, the office assistant in his town, too, everybody kind of has a hand in that.
We certainly don't want to have her drive and pay for...
That's what we added, her full-time salary for.
That committee has a lot of staff time, it has Jennifer, it has Steve Tyler, and it has Mike Koshawagi. That's a lot of money.
A lot of money, yeah, I agree, I think we need to eliminate all those.
I would recommend Steve Tyler's that may contact with the Park and Recreation.
And so Mike could come if there's a need on a certain issue, but other than that, he doesn't need to be there either.
I think Mike or Steve should be there, I think, when he pulls in.
I, I think, I think Steve is the best.
Steve was the supervisor, and he's, one of his roles is handling park maintenance, right? I remember the presentation that we had several months ago, so he's the appropriate guy, not Mike.
He should be, yeah, absolutely.
And, but we did have Jennifer, she shouldn't drive in for just merely that reason, but taking over park responsibilities was one of the reasons when we, when council moved her from part-time to full-time and justified that full-time, or that full-time capability, so. So it's difficult after you get appointed and get a full-time salary to say, oh, well, it's inconvenient for me to go do the job that you're paying me for, but thank you very much.
She didn't say that, that's, that's our obligation.
She's been working from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., though, which, some, to some extent, makes it inconvenient to participate in too many of the town committees, so, I don't know if that's changed, but I have talked to Ed Flynn about that, too.
Two points, one, Shirley referred to my unexcused absences, it's this committee, but it's, it's more than unexcused absences, I understand that there was a, there's one member who I think has missed five or six meetings, one who resigned recently, and I guess we're just waiting to fill that position, but there's an Atherton Dame's representative who's never shown up, and she's not even listed as, as missing, is my understanding, and that's the kind of thing that, for all this time, for us not to have known.
I'd like to clarify that, if I may, going back, when Diane Creighton was originally appointed to Park and Rec, she was appointed as a Dame representative, and as time turned out, two years, there was, she wasn't continuing because she wasn't attending the Dame's meetings. So, there's a communication, I think, that had, breakdown had happened, she then was approached by staff saying, because they didn't have enough people, this is my recollection, because they wanted to go back to your records, that she was asked to come on as a representative of the community, as, as an appointed person.
Well, they're all appointed, according to Bill Connors.
What, I'm sorry?
Bill Connors clarified for us that they're all appointed, in theory, because the council approves it, I agree with you, I hadn't even first referred to it that way either.
Yeah, so, so that I don't think, at that point, there was a breakdown in communication back to the day, saying, you don't have a representative on here, so, and it went past prior, prior to my chairmanship of this, it went past and it was not addressed, and it just kind of went, because there were other representatives already on, so it's trying to get this committee back into where they should be, and it wasn't.
I thought Jennifer Jeffries was appointed.
I'd like clarification to Mary Lou Timpson, who took, who was a recording secretary, she was approached, which I had no knowledge of, she was approached, she was asked, she thought she would think about it, the Dames voted on it, but it was never official.
Well, you see, that's a long time for us not to know, it's the entire term, for us not to know that entire, that, that there's that vacancy and that for five or six meetings, someone hasn't been attending. Also, this is one commission that really needs a lesson in the Brown Act, because they have not been following, or Roberts Rules of Order, whatever the appropriate documentation would be as appropriate, because they've not been following the rules, they don't ask for public comment, they don't close public comment, they reopen public comment after the commission is, it's come back to the commission, they've combined items on the agenda, they've added, someone walked in at one meeting and added, added contacts on the agenda, that person spoke, so, there, it's, it's been very flexible.
Similar to this meeting.
Yes.
Well, I think that's, that's a point taken, I think in the past we haven't had a great deal of attendance to Park and Rec, and we've kind of let people speak as they pleased when they felt, and the last two meetings, we have, my error at the last meeting, we've now required a lot of extra people who are attending our meetings, and we do plan to correct that.
Any other comments?
I would just ask a sort of...
It's not working, we turned it off because it was...
Oh, yeah, I would ask a different question, the Holbrook Palmer Foundation also meets, and I don't see anything on this list for them, I guess they have separate, I kind of say to myself, why do we need a whole group Palmer Foundation when we have a Park and Rec commission?
They're two separate, they're two separate, you have no...
It's not a tax, the Holbrook Palmer Foundation is not affiliated with the town, they're their own separate.
Oh, is that right?
We don't, council doesn't appoint them members, that's...
We're a fundraising, the foundation is fundraising.
They still, they still advise on park issues.
I've never seen any recommendation on a council agenda from Park.
I've been, I used to attend all these meetings, and certainly they have strong opinions on park issues, which they make public, and I don't quite know where that's...
Wait, the Park Foundation is a fundraising element to raise for capital improvements, I think that was done, that is their mission, is to raise for capital improvements, I think that was done, that could be corrected, I may be wrong, but as a way to help make park improvements when you acquire the gift, so that is their, they raise funds to improve the park.
Are they, do they actively do that, because all I hear are the Dames raising money?
Well, it's kind of like an auxiliary, the Dames are an auxiliary, I think it was set up that way.
But they take staff time.
No. No.
It's kind of used to.
It doesn't.
Because the city manager used to go there, that's staff time.
They're asked to come, they're not required.
Staff, I mean.
Yeah, they're invited, but...
They're invited.
Jerry Gruber used to be there.
He used to attend a few here and there, but no.
They're invited, but they're not...
And Steve used to be there, because I've been there, and these two have both been there, but that's staff time.
They're invited, they're invited, I don't, you know, that's...
I'm in the city, but...
Denise, have a question.
So, they do raise funds for the park.
Denise, you have a comment?
Yeah, I think, only comment I have is that perhaps the foundation's mission should be clarified, it might be something that the foundation should take up to reconfirm that their role and mission is to raise money for improvements in the park.
I think that'd be very good.
I do know, though, that the foundation has historically come to the city council, well firstly to Park and Rec, and then to the council, if they have a proposal for what they would like to fund, so that they are raising money for improvements that the town and the council are in agreement with, and I think that that part of the relationship has been good and is ongoing, and that their efforts to raise money for specific projects have always been, gone through, you know, forward with, with the consent and agreement of council, and I think that's an important element to understand, and I, and they are, they understand their role.
I think qualifications you're suggesting would be good.
Who would do that, Bill Connors?
No, the foundation would have to do their own.
They have to do that.
It's not that staff would...
We could ask them to do that.
Ask them.
Oh, and this is another, you know, all the committees, I, I don't know if I have to repeat myself, but I think all the committees, unless there's another reason, a reason to do otherwise, should be meeting here, in chambers.
The foundation...
I think that...
The foundation isn't a town committee.
No, with Park and Rec, I mean, people know we need to, we are part of the park, that is, our charter is the park, when we have to do a walk-through of the park, or any questions about the park, we do that in the park, that is our territory, our charter and our territory, I would hate for us to have to meet here, and then walk over there and come back here, and then if there's an issue, if we need to go look at something when Steve Tyler or somebody needs to inquire or discuss, if we need to go out and look at it, I would like to keep our meetings at the...
I think it's important to have all public meetings here in chambers, except for when they have those two walkthroughs, it can make, there may be a reason to do otherwise, but it is not a convenient location to get to, it is not easy to get into, people search and try the doors and don't know that they're having a meeting here, I think it would generate more people coming.
Okay, any other discussion on Park and Rec, yes, Rose?
I have a question about the foundation, the foundation is not, somebody said, a commission, it's not a commission, it's a separate.
It's separate.
It's separate.
And, and I thought that we said that if committees were going to meet, like the art committee, if their issue was to have a meeting to design and prepare for an art exhibit in the basement of the house, wherever they meet, they would meet there.
Yes.
But the park commission, we only have one park, and their business is in the park, so why wouldn't they meet in the park?
Because they don't, I've attended a number of meetings, and I know of other people who've attended a lot more than I have, they don't go out and look at the park, except for when they do the walkthrough, and when they, and when they, the other, when they do the facilities.
But they're right in the midst of the thing that they are responsible for.
That, that's true, but they should be familiar and responsible for as well, just as we're responsible for all the town, and we, and we should know what's going on, but, but for attendance purposes and, and for community action purposes, I think it should be in chambers, except if there's a need to be in the park, I think if we're trying...
I agree, but that's, that's the difference.
If we're trying to, to make everybody subject to the same rules.
I don't agree either, but, Denise, so your comment?
From a financial standpoint, having all the meetings here in chambers would actually cost the town more, MCE staff, who's our, who we outsourced, our public works to, would have to come here constantly and reset up for the library, and reset up for the arts committee, do the setup for the Park and Rec.
Well, who sets it up now?
MCE, we're doing our best to reduce that, but if we add more committees in here, it's going to, it's going to go up again.
But who sets it up at the house?
They do it themselves, the arts committee and the park.
And you can't do it yourself here? I mean, when we meet as the library steering committee here, it's all over the place, and we just sit down, if they're, if they're up here, their seats are...
I think you're creating a greater problem than we're solving here, right?
No, I think it's a question of space.
Well, I disagree with you on your...
I think it's a question of space versus participation.
Is the chambers available Wednesday night?
That's something we have to figure out.
Because you have plant, don't you have plant, what else meets here, we meet Wednesday night at 6:30, does the planning commission meet here Wednesday night at 6:30?
The first Wednesday?
We meet the first Wednesday.
Fourth, fourth, or...
And they have a court, so no one joins.
All right. For...
I just do something in the park.
All right, I think a recommendation would be have as many meetings as we can here in the city council, however, there are lots of reasons why it might make sense for other people to meet other places, and I think this is one of the specific organizations, and as well as the art committee, where they would probably have more meetings somewhere else than here, however, that's my personal opinion.
Why? So meet here unless there's a reason to meet somewhere else.
My question...
That's what we agreed previously.
Are we, the only two committees that are right now meeting in the park are the arts and the Park and Rec, and we meet in the main house, so is this because we're eliminating the main house at some point, and, or are we actually looking for attendance, is that...
I think, I think it's attendance more than anything, I don't think that the committee, from everything I've seen and in speaking with people who have attended those meetings, they don't go into the park, and attendance-wise, I think it's, it's, if we, if people know where we're meeting and want to stop in at a meeting, they know that it's here and on a certain date, just as we want to keep certain dates rather than special meetings that people can attend.
But Park and Rec has always met at the house, has always met, and the people that...
And you have very few people attending.
Well, and part of that is, for a very long time, we couldn't even get the Liddley people to attend, they would skip us and go, we were, we were the stepchild of the council, so they, instead of coming to us, they would jump over us, you know, it's taken many years to finally get that into the right format, which is procedure-wise, I still feel on the record that I think Park and Rec should remain in the park until that facility is demolished, and still at that time, we, that is our territory, that is our responsibility, that's where we should meet.
Well, my feeling is that, I, I think we should try to have as many meetings as possible in what is considered to be a town headquarters, because that's where people come, that's, that's where they know we're, we're working, and, you know, if there's some particular walkthrough that was needed for the Park and Rec, I wouldn't have any problem with them having immediately, but I think we should get used to this fact, and get all the residents used to fact, this is where we're setting policies, we're having meetings, this is a place that we should be using, and frankly, the conference room over in the town administration building is not used that much either, so there's room over there, and Theresa, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we use that conference room very much, and we could have a meeting over there as well, and then everybody knows there's a meeting to come to here.
We use the conference room a lot on a daily basis, it's our only place.
Not at night, not at this time.
I also don't prefer having residents up, you know, in, in town offices at night when nobody's around, and there's five hundred, everything's locked up, not saying that it is going to happen.
I like this.
Personally, I like the setup that is with the Park and Rec, in, in parks, that will see, we're kind of contradicting ourselves, too, because back in January, council was saying we're going, we want to move our meeting room to get more people to come to these meetings, and now they're saying we want to move them all here in this room.
And people are attending those meetings, Theresa, last meeting, we couldn't figure out, and I know where they are, how to get in, we, Smith said to me, how do we get in? Can we go in through the kitchen? I don't know, oh, yeah, the door looks open, so we walk in through the kitchen. Oh, yeah, the door looks open, so we walk in through the kitchen. And at the meeting before, someone was struggling to try, came late, was struggling to try and figure out what door to come in.
I think, I think this is a lot, yeah. I just, I just think this is a lot of nonsense. I think this is one more step by the library committee to try to make the main house non-revoked for other organizations. I'd have to reject that. I think that, I'd like to, I'd like to move on from this topic. We can have meetings here in city hall, we should have meetings in city hall, however, Parks and Rec, it makes sense to me that they would meet in the park, but that's, so I think...
Let us meet in the park. So let us meet in the park.
I didn't say you shouldn't. I said it makes sense.
We could put signs if you feel that it's in, if people cannot look, they would be happy to place some signs on. You should make signs to say that which...
That would be a recommendation that you do, so you get your head, your head count. And I think that if we want to go ahead, and we'd already made a motion to have as many meetings here, there, you can see in your agenda where it makes sense to have a meeting here, because you don't need to be in the park. It would be appropriate, and you could have a meeting here. However, I don't think we should be requiring that and continuing the conversation here. We can bring it up when the full council's here and have a final vote if we want to specifically single out one committee or another. But I'd like to recommend to the council that we move forward with this with the one edit, and, well, I guess there were two edits. One was to do some Brown Act training, et cetera, as well as strike the requirement for them to promote and stimulate public interest therein. Is there a second for that?
And also make it so that Steve Tyler is the...
Oh, yes. It's a Steve Tyler person. All, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Rail committee, there is a special handout.
Yeah, rail committee considered the mission statement, and what we have for you is a proposed, some proposed changes in the mission statement, continue to act as the advisor committee, but adding some wording there, including recommending aggressive measures to support the town's position on rail issues, which may include legal action law, which the recommendation has done in the past in terms of recommendations to the council, with the assistance of appropriate staff, research and address specific facts. One of the things that has changed with the departure of Duncan is that we've lost someone that had a lot of specific experience on rail matters. Duncan wrote a number of papers on behalf of the town, and was the committee's resource person. From time to time, I think there's a technical committee that's been set up by Caltrain to deal with the rail quarter, and the town really needs to have representation on that, on that committee when it meets, because that's where a lot of the details of what Caltrain is proposing to do, and that includes the leftification of the line here. It's important the town to have representation on that committee. Perform active outreach and cooperative efforts for groups and organizations opposed to vispy rail. Participation in the municipal city's consortium is one example of that. And authorize, we have been acting as spokespeople, articulating the town's related policy positions as it pertains to rail matters through vispy rail, through Caltrain board of directors and organizations. This is, our outreach and this regardless within the policies of the council, which are rather broad frameworks. So this is what's being proposed, and I'd love to respond to that.
Oh, I'll comment, see, I think the rail committee has been doing a really good job, and I think that some of the members of that committee have been putting in all kinds of time, and I hope they can be successful, but I certainly, I think that they have, they have done a wonderful job in trying to convince the legislature to stop this brown dog, as it's now called. So, anyway, that's my comment.
Kathy, anything?
No. Are we being, these are, these are policies, so how does this fit in with what we're doing?
I don't know what you have. You're gonna have another handout there? This is your handout.
And the handout, we ended up just...
So...
How do you, how do you want to integrate? Do you want to integrate these policies in with the committee?
I didn't know that that was gonna be handed out, up and addressed that separately, because that's not part of this, that should be a separate discussion. What I attempted to do with that handout is to try and summarize where I think, where the committee thinks we are in terms of positions we take in the town, and memos we've written, and a form of policy we've adopted as a council. And at some point in time, it's probably not appropriate now, but at some point in time, I think you go through that, or take a look at it on your own, and if you have some questions, contact Vinnie Belmont with your questions. The committee will be glad to do the rest of that.
Okay.
So these priorities, we're proving this, the priorities aren't necessarily, I mean, I'm all in favor, for example, the wire gates and things like that, but we'd said that provided we go ahead and get the money from Caltrain. I know those things...
No issues.
Okay, all right.
So we're not dealing with that. That's what I needed to know.
Okay.
That makes it much easier.
I'd like to put an exclamation point on that we want to continue the rail committee and say that they're doing an excellent job, and we appreciate all the work that they're doing. What was the other, oh, and that we're gonna have somebody from the public works department assigned to this.
Yes. So most of our public works is outsourced, so if you want me to go ahead and make sure they start planning those technical meetings.
You should have, I think Steve is the... Let's see, it's gotta be Steve or Mike, it's gotta be you.
Yeah.
So it's gotta be a red, a staff member who will pack.
He might be Mike.
That would be Mike. Mike should have had all the meetings. All right? And I think that they're on Tuesdays, so at Mike...